Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt.
I will say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father.
Hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trust in Christ, as we forgive those who trust in us, and lead us not into temptation.
Resilience.
The Prayer of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marquardt.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Councilmember Dan Dor.
Here.
Thank you. We'll move on to item one, which is public comment. You'll have three minutes. There's no back and forth. We just listen, and this is the time I remind everybody to silence their cell phones. We have some cards?
Yep.
Great.
Nick Mayon for Resolution Number 24-13.
Ladies and gentlemen, the council, thank y'all for allowing me to speak. It appears, once again, the state has railroaded the city into closing the Caroline Street Crossing. Why is the Louisiana DOT so labor-focused on the Caroline Street Crossing? Many crossings connect to state highways that desperately need state intervention, but instead, they choose to focus on one within the corporate limits of New Iberia. Given all the other crossings that create a safety hazard to both the motoring public and trains through this general area, why would Louisiana DOTD insist on focusing all their power and resources on this single crossing? Logically, this makes no sense. When the Caroline Street subdivision was built, a railroad crossing was approved. Typically, these right-of-way are granted in perpetuity. Obviously, it was needed, but the argument today is that it is not needed, which contradicts the past decisions of DOTD. DOTD now states that Caroline Street should be closed if not needed, and that the road has a skew in it. The skew in the road was reviewed and approved before they installed the crossing, back when the neighborhood was built, so why the sudden change in their decision-making process? Decisions that affect the citizens of New Iberia should be made with up-to-date information. The study that is being used to justify the closing is 15 years old. I ask you, would you allow your financial advisor to make an investment decision on your behalf with 15-year-old information? Obviously not. With the letter that was sent to the city, says you have a right to appeal the decision to the Railroad Safety Board. Do we know who the Railroad Safety Board is? It is composed of DOTD employees. How can individuals side against their employer, who provide them with the means for a living, to make a fair and impartial decision? Lastly, the letter received on December 27, 2023, that was signed by Secretary of Louisiana DOTD Eric Calavata, it is my understanding that he has since been replaced with Mr. Terrence Donahue Jr., who is with the new administration. Is the new Secretary of Louisiana DOTD not able to give his opinion on this matter? Or should he not be briefed on it before a final decision is made? It appears that DOTD have their crosshairs on Caroline Street, and not the many other infrastructure issues they should be focused on. In the end, this is not about public safety. It is simply about money. The state does not want to pay to upgrade crossing, and our city reportedly does not have the funds to do so. With this, the residents who contribute to the city coffers will suffer, and the multi-billion-dollar corporation of BNSF will be allowed to continue to profit without contributing to the city coffers. How can a city continue to grow its population when the infrastructure is continuing to be reduced? To get this issue resolved, the council should file an injunction against DOTD and allow the court system to hear the case so that a fair and impartial decision can be made on facts, and not what appears to be targeted initiative by DOTD against the city of New Iberia and its residents. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. David Merrill for Resolution Number 24-13.
Good evening, council. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to be here. And basically, a lot of things that was just said is basically truth about a lot of things. I've been dealing with this for over 10 years, when I was on the council the first time. I don't understand how the study, like he's talking about, the only thing they keep coming up with is the skew when you come across the track. That is very weak, when you look at how that's been there for years. I've been there 20 years. That's been there for years. Nobody never said anything about it before, but all of a sudden, they come in with that one thing. There's a nursing home at Denner Street. Then they added a rehab center to it. How can you not look at those things as something that should not have a railroad crossing closed in an area where people could come across for ambulance or anything like that? Deer Street was something I talked about when I was on the council. Deer Street do not have any traffic. Go take your ride over on Deer Street. Take your ride, each one of you guys, and see what I'm talking about. It's a very short street, for one, and there's not much traffic on it. So I don't understand why would that not be used to be able to close instead of a street that has way more traffic on it, and has a nursing home and a new rehab center built in the last few years onto it? And another thing, too, is you've got a lot of constituents been coming out for years now. When I was on the council, Ms. Ledbetter got them out there to come out. The people were very concerned about it. And another thing, too, is you have Glen Street right in the front of my house. You know how small Glen Street is? If they close that railroad crossing, there's going to be a lot of traffic coming down Glen Street, and that's not going to be too good for the citizens of New Iberia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Antoine for Resolution Number 24-13.
Hello, Dan. I live on Evangeline Street. I'm not on Deer Street. My concern would be the traffic. In the past, or very recently, when y'all closed, when they closed Jefferson Terrace, for any reason, people think they're still on Jefferson Terrace when they're coming down Evangeline Street. So I'm thinking, if you would happen to close Caroline Street, the same thing would probably happen. So I'm for, if you have to close one, going to close Deer Street. As he stated, Deer Street doesn't have any traffic. And basically, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. That's all? Good. Thank y'all.
Item clerk, item 2A.
Acceptance of the minutes. Regular meeting of January 16, 2024, which will be published on February 10, 2024.
I need a motion.
Motion.
A motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, and a second by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on our minute? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 3A.
David Merrill to announce his candidacy for New Iberia City Councilman, District 4.
Could've done it all at once.
You're right. Good evening. Good evening, once again, and I know all you guys on here. There's going to be a new council coming up here. And I've been asked since last year. I've been praying on this. People have been asking me. And I'm not doing this because I just want to do it. I have to pray on this because I've got a lot of things in my life that I have going on also. But I don't like to do anything that I can't give 100% to. I'm not that type of person. And I think I did a good job for the people in my district. People still calls me, and Ms. Ledbetter is the councilwoman. And I just want to be able to be here and make sure people comfortable about knowing somebody that's there for them, and that has their interests at heart. Not David Merrill's interests, the citizens of my district, what they want and what they need. And I would love to be able to work with you guys again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 4A.
Special Ordinance Number 2023-2024-13, and ordinance amending the budget to roll over unused American Rescue Plan Act engineering funds.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Councilman David Broussard and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Now we move to the main motion.
Motion.
A motion. Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion on this item? This is that 311,000 that we are rolling over for our engineering funds, that we talked about last time.
It's left over from the.
Arbor projects.
Left over from the engineering arbor funds.
Yep. Questions, comments?
Are we good?
Then please vote your machines. Thank you. 4B.
Special Ordinance Number 2023-2024-14, and ordinance amending the budget to carry forward the remaining budget for the City of New Iberia asphalt overlay and concrete repair project.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Anyone to discuss this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
So move.
Second.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Now I need a motion on the main motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion on this item? This is, it's not going to be a million dollars. We do have still bills out, okay? It shows that it's a million right now, but they're still working. Our engineer estimates and contracts are all unit cost-based, so it's not going to be a million bucks. It's probably going to be a half a million dollars by the time we finish, once all the smoke clears. And we spent a little bit of it. Our hot patch machine came in, just to let y'all know. The training for that, I think, is in a week. Then we'll be able to start utilizing that. We also did a striping program that we're putting together with some of this excess money. It'll all go to the roads, but for now, this is just a bookkeeping kind of housekeeping we need to do. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor, you said the hot patch machine is in, and we had kind of laid off on putting that brittle stuff in the road.
The useless stuff.
The useless stuff.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we need some training. We have switched, and there's been a few holes where we've patched with concrete in the interim, because that granular, I have another word for it, but I'm not going to use it here. It doesn't stick, it doesn't stay. At one time, people thought that was our road program.
Right.
It's a temporary patch, and believe me, it's less than temporary. But the hot patch machine is in. That was probably about $50,000-something that we used some of this money. We also got enough product to begin working. We're paying $2,500 for the guy to fly in and train our crews, and then that will begin. Now, in the interim, I also hired a subcontractor. We have a company now that, for the patching of the major streets we've just fixed, it really has to come out good. I mean, we were hoping we wouldn't have to do any, but we've hired a company that patches for Loco now, and they'll work for us as well. And so if and when, and we're going to have to, if and when we have to get to our old infrastructure under a new street, these people will come and impact. So we're really trying to step our game up. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 4C.
Special Ordinance Number 2023-2024-15, and ordinance amending the budget to roll over unused Act 170 funds.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt and Councilman David Broussard. Anyone to comment on this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
So move.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Now we go to the main motion. I need one.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas. And remember, this is the rest of the money that we're utilizing to renovate the second-floor courtroom. Questions, comments? None? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 4D.
Special Ordinance Number 2023-2024-16, and ordinance amending the budget for funds related to change order number two for the West End Park air conditioning upgrades project.
Motion to open this public hearing?
Motion.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis?
Second.
Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter?
Thank you. I was kind of waiting for that side, you know?
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Thank y'all. Now I need a motion for the main motion.
So move.
Second.
Councilman Dan Dor. All right. And Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas. Remember, this item is around $60,000. These are repairs to the boiler piping at the West End Gym, so that, as we've changed the air conditioning system, this was an opportune time when that equipment was out of the way to fix our aged boiler. Questions, comments?
I was wondering why we got a blank sheet in our package, but I got it.
Yes, yes.
57, 57, 847?
Yes, I said 60, but yes, sir. Yeah, I didn't do it.
I just rounded it. Any other questions or comments? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. See, they were watching you, Elaine.
They were watching you. I read everything.
Item 5A.
Resolution Number 24-14, a resolution declaring the intention of the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, to proceed with financing in an amount not to exceed $16 million for the purpose of financing any costs associated with the constructing and improvement, improving of public roads and streets in the city, authorizing an application to the Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority, and the Louisiana State Bond Commission, and providing for other matters with respect thereto.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. And we have Jason Akers here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Evening, sir.
Good evening. Jason Akers of Foley Udel. Sean Tous, Government Consultants, your municipal advisor. As you recall, at the election last fall, the citizens approved a new tax of 6.83 mils to be used for constructing and improving public roads and streets in the city. This financing actually takes the proceeds of that tax and leverages into bonds for an immediate public benefit by improving roads throughout the city. To enhance the ability to leverage that tax, we're recommending that you use, go through Louisiana Community Development Environmental, Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority, affectionately known as the LCDA, which the city has actually used for financings before. It allows you to leverage more of the proceeds of the tax and get a bigger benefit upfront. This will go from, after your approval today, it will go to LCDA for approval on Thursday. It'll go to State Bond Commission in March, come back to you for approval after Easter in early April. Then we'll work on the sale of the bonds with our goal of having funds available to you, hopefully in that $16 million range, maybe even a little bit more. Maybe even a little bit more, having funds available to you by the 1st of June, end of May. So happy to answer any questions, but just want to be clear that this is taking the proceeds of that tax that was approved by the voters for this purpose and using it for this purpose.
Voters? We also promised them that it would end up not being a new tax in the fact that we were paying off the sewer money. So when does that happen?
That was, that is actually paid off on
It's all complete.
1st.
1st.
Was today, February 6, so.
So 1st.
I'm sure Kevin has probably already tendered that payment.
I talk to him about that like every day. But I just wanted, so the public knew that we are doing exactly what we said we'd do, that, you know, one village will slip in and replace another, and it doesn't cost the citizens any more money. But you hadn't brought that up.
Exactly.
I knew it was 1st, but I just wanted to have that discussion. Good, good. Got a little bit of the floor for questions, comments? Yes, sir.
How's the rates look right now?
Bring in the rate man.
I always tell people, if I could predict the rates, I would be sitting on a beach with a little umbrella drink now and not be working for a living. They, you know, last year, obviously, we saw a pretty sizable increase in rates in to attempt to control inflation. I heard some discussion before the meeting. I think you're right. We seem to have seen that level off a little bit. We saw a little bit of a downtick in rates right at the beginning of the year. They've ticked back up slightly, but they seem to be leveled off. We're hopeful, given the Fed's recent announcement, that we'll see some downward pressure on rates. Typically, what we see in an election year is rates decreasing, so we're going to keep our optimistic hat on and hope they continue to trend downward. Obviously, they're much, or they're higher than we've seen in the past 10 years, but we still have relatively low rates. I mean, it's still not a horrible time to borrow money. So we're going to do our best to frame it in the best light and get you the best rates. But that's, we'll keep watching them.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
Are we waiting until we get that money to spend the half a million that we have left over?
We are waiting to see exactly what we have left, okay?
Right.
We don't have to wait and tie the two together, but we have to wait till the project, the 12.5 million, the contractors are completely finished and out of here.
Okay.
So if we want to look at, we won't get as much bang for the buck, okay? But I mean, I just, I just tell you how it can be, and y'all help me decide what we're going to do. If we would want to take that half a million, every district seems to have one street that didn't get finished, one intersection that didn't, one block that has fallen apart since the time that they did the first survey of who had the worst streets, okay? The half a million won't do all of those.
Right.
So we will just make a collective decision, as we always do. Did we try to do, because the big, not battle, because we really don't battle, we just debate and come back together after. The big decision will be, we don't have enough to fix all of the problem areas, even the small problem areas, till we get the new money. So we'll have to make a decision as a group, like we always do. Do we spend the half a million? And the money will not go as far, because there's value of, you know, quantity. In other words, we get a better price.
Right.
So do we wait until we do the whole program with money available by the summer? Our engineers are working, so by, I figure it'll be August by the time we take bids. The money will be there, maybe July, probably August. And so we take bids and we get going. Do we take that half a million and roll it in with this pot? And do, you know, do we there, where we get the most bang for the buck? Or do we plug a few holes, literally, you know, with that half a million dollars in the meantime?
Okay, gotcha.
So that decision will be a group decision, and it'll be coming.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Dan, Mayor, myself, years ago, we were stumbling around here. Potholes everywhere. Trying to fix them. Here's a sigh of relief that we're here today. So I want the people to know that, yeah, we come from a lot of troubling roads. We're blessed that we have some money now to fix most all of them. It'll take years, but I thank you. The man before you was sitting right here giving us some bad news off and on about what we don't have. And I'm glad we're hearing some good news lately. So thank y'all for what you do for us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So the half a million that we have right now, plus the engineering money, it might be more than the half a million we might have, right? The engineering money that we talked about tonight, same part?
That engineering money was for arbor projects.
Okay.
That's a separate part.
That's right.
That's because we, how we handle securing our professional fees. Two separate ones. But we should have a half a million.
Okay.
Anybody else? No other discussion, no other questions? We're moving. So timeline, you feel that we'll go bond shopping when? Later part of April. Into the first part of May. And we'll start refining anticipated rates, debt service, et cetera, at that point, and of course, in consultation with you. So our next target to be back here is a meeting April 16, assuming it doesn't get moved one way or another. But so April 16, and we'll have a better estimate at that point of what the market looks like. Good, good. No, this is exciting. Look, we worked long and hard to get to this point as a council, as, you know, had to do a few things twice, but it worked. True, you know, a couple of years ago, the interest rates were somewhat better, but we're going to make the best of it. I mean, I think that we've got a good road program now, good engineers, and a pretty good handle with spending the 12.5 million that we are about to wrap up. What to expect? Our citizens know what to expect. It is a big inconvenience, but, you know, progress, you've got to crack the egg, you know? But I feel comfortable about this, and I think we're heading in a good direction. Thank you. So if we have no other comments, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. We'll be talking. Thanks.
5B.
Resolution Number 24-15, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the Supra Drive Backflow Preventer Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation. Connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. I have one question. Punchless, done? Everything's good?
Good to go.
We inspected, we ready to close it out?
Inspected, tested.
All right.
It's flowing.
I think you missed 5B.
No.
No, we just did 5A.
Don't do me.
Yeah, we're on 5B. Yeah. Yeah.
Don't worry about it, girl.
Any questions or comments? On 5B?
Some of the people should be straight now.
Yeah, we trying, you know? That's a big step.
Yeah, it is, thank you.
Big step, oh no, we, we have more coming, we're leaving.
And, uh, I just wanna mention that Craig was super helpful in answering all my questions, all my requests that I randomly had, um, he did a good job, so I appreciate him being here in this position, so thank you.
Good. Good, he did a few things today, I gave him a pat on the back for, okay. Anybody else? Done, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five C.
Uh, res- resolution number twenty-four dash oh six.
You switched.
What are you, oh, I skipped this one. Don't worry about it. Resolution number twenty-four dash fifteen, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one LCDBG Basin DC System Improvements Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
To move.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gosselin, need a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Marla Lewis. Okay, you wanna tell us about this one? Should be good. Come on up.
Um, yeah, we have, um, who is Susan Richard, don't miss that one. Um, they've completed pretty much all the work, um, I think they still had some cured in place pipelining to put in. There's punch list, we'll make sure it's taken care of before the end of the lean period.
Good, good.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Five D.
Oh, sorry, resolution number twenty-four dash sixteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the City of New Iberia and McKinley James pertaining to the development of a process for adjudicated properties.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. And we have Mr. McKinley James here, oh, and it's, it's his wife's birthday, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Good evening, how are you?
Took us to a council meet on a birthday.
Right.
Yeah, I know, that's what I had to say.
She's a councilwoman.
He's dedicated, though, see, wants the job.
Um, but yeah, my name is McKinley James, I'm here, um, um, to urge this city to get into this agreement to, uh, deal with some of this blighted property. Um, I know currently, right now, there's an agreement in place that, that's not as productive as the city would want. And, um, what I'm proposing to the council is that, um, I help develop a ord- uh, develop a series of ordinances that would allow the city to, um, take care of these properties in a, um, in a more, um, constructive way.
Good, Jeff?
If I can just kinda give some background.
That you can.
We have a lot of adjudicated properties, hundreds and hundreds on our list. And right now, we're using, um, Civic Source to try to sell those properties, and it's not working. We just don't have many customers, we're not moving many of these properties at all. So, uh, we cast around for a solution, and we actually went to Lafayette and met with them about their process and their ordinance. And they have a system that seems to work pretty well. They don't use Civic Source for adjudicated properties, they have their own people. And, uh, their own people have an ordinance that they've used that gives, uh, neighbors who mow property, preference and nonprofits' preference, and other people who wanna do good things with properties' preference. And the goal of that system is not to make money, it's to move properties off the adjudicated list into private hands so that they can be developed and, and, uh, and neighborhoods can, can benefit. So, we met in Lafayette, and I think, um, Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson-Reed and Ledbetter met with the mayor and me over there. So then we contacted, um, I think, one or two other attorneys about this job, sorry, McKinley, you weren't the first. But you were highly recommended by the councilwoman, and, uh, so I contacted you, and we met in Lafayette about this. So this is not something that he is asking us to do, uh, right off the bat, we've asked him to do it. So this is, we've asked him to give us a proposal, to put this together. So, the goal of this contract would be for Mr. James, who has experience with the Lafayette ordinance, and experience with title closings, and title insurance, and title issues, and experience with property law of this kind, to get him to help us to design a system that's gonna work like Lafayette's system. Lafayette has spent, I think, about, I don't know, maybe sixty thousand dollars a year for their staff, and they've moved, um, you know, fifty something properties this last year. Um, it's not a big moneymaker, obviously, for them, but I think it'd be a good idea for us. So what we're trying to do is design a new way of selling property, and Mr. James would be the architect who would give us a plan to do that. So he would say, this is the ordinance you would need, these are the forms you'd need, this is the process that you'd need. And I think he's, uh, certainly qualified to do that, and we certainly need him to do the work. So his proposal would be to design this, and I think he said a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour is what he would charge, and, um, which is the same thing I build the city for, uh, regular work, and he estimated thirty to forty hours. And, and we're working on that. We have a couple of obstacles that, um, we may not have in Lafayette, we don't have the same market, so we're gonna have to really push people to want this property, because we don't wanna open up a property store and have no customers. Because the, the, you know, the goal is to have people want this stuff. And the second is, we're gonna have to work out some kind of peace treaty with the parish about how to divide the money. Because Lafayette has consolidated government, so their system is a little simpler, they don't have that problem. But, um, uh, I, I met with Mr. James about this, you know, I was excited, I was as excited as you can be about adjudicated property, um, to have somebody come in and, and help us with this, and I think we do need the help. So he would put together the plan, and then it would come back to the council, the council would have to appropriate money for the budget, uh, for this project, if it decided to move forward with it, but we gotta do something. Otherwise, we're just gonna drown in these properties, because these, these are gonna be unsafe structures, they're gonna be tall grass, they're gonna be off the tax rolls, they're gonna be a mess, so we need to try to get rid of that. So, uh, Mr. James gave us a proposal, I think y'all have copies of it. Uh, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, I think the city, I think it's reasonable, and I think the city needs it.
Good question.
Yeah.
Got a good one.
Yeah, um, I, I read through his proposal in a simple format, and I think you probably got, I mean, knowing your situation, it's a good idea. But what is our contractual obligations with Civic Source? I wasn't here when, when we went into the deal with Civic Source, or do we have one?
I think we can end that, and I think we, Mr. James looked at the contract for us, 'cause we sent it to him. Yeah, we can end, we can end that adjudicated property process with them.
Okay.
Um, I can't believe they're making a lot of money doing that. We, we need to look at whether or not we wanna use Civic Source for tax sales, which is a different process. And that's pretty burdensome, as far as the legal requirements, and they're doing our tax sales now. And I'm not sure we wanna move that back in-house, because that's a, uh, there are a lot of legal requirements whenever you do a tax sale. So, we may wanna keep that part of the deal, which is separate from the adjudicated property deal.
Yes.
And I did get a chance to review the contracts, uh, I believe it's two months notice, no cost to the city determining that deal.
It's pretty straightforward then.
Yeah, I'd like them to keep doing the tax sales, 'cause we taking this on with a new employee, with a new system, we need to concentrate on this, to me, and make this work.
And, and I would be willing to stay on and help, you know, get, uh, garner interest, um, in this process. You know, I'm from New Iberia as well, so it's, it's, um, important to me to have these properties cleaned up, to see the ci- to see the city grow.
We're gonna take you up on that.
Yeah.
If you got a vested interest, that's great.
If I could say one more thing, Mr. James had some good ideas about other problems.
He did, uh, he did, he did.
So, you know-
I've been volunteering him for all kinda stuff.
So, yeah, I could, you know, I warned him about the mayor, I said, look, he's gonna have you doing ten things.
Councilman Doyle, you had something?
So, um, the, the scope of work he'll be doing is the legal part of it, correct?
Yeah, setting up the ordinances, writing the ordinances, getting them together.
The city would implement that?
We gonna, once the ordinances are passed, you know, we will have to do a budget amendment, we will be looking to hire an employee to take over at some point, maybe not right at first, but we're gonna have to, in other words, to, to try to move these properties. Civic Source came in, they did us a favor, they, you know, they made money while they were here, all the low hanging fruit sold. The good, the good of the bad, okay, people move that on quickly. So, they made money at the front end, and now we just to appoint that, until we do something different, creative, and drive our own market, that we create a product out of what we have. And we definitely have a problem, you know, Lafayette has two hundred adjudicated properties, we got five hundred and thirty-five and counting, okay? Lafayette's four times the size of us, so our median income is much lower than Lafayette, you know? So, we don't have a big market, we, we have, we are missing the boat on some development. Uh, Dee Dee was here, she'd be talking about, uh, USDA loans, and, uh, you know, uh, we all talk about, you know, getting some affordable housing in our communities. So, this is a way to, to begin to do that, but to pull it off, we will definitely go down a new path.
Would like compliance would be-
Totally separate. Totally separate, this, this would stand on its own, and, and concentrate on moving these properties and getting an interest in it. And we're gonna be creative, you know, we talk about the mode of own, that the neighbor might end up owning the piece of property, that we just give up the taxes. We talked about, you know, as, 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 I can't do that alone, we do that together, but we're not getting anything off of these properties now. And it's where, in many instances, our blight is, of course, our tall grass is, crime. There are many things going on at some of these properties that are not productive for our community. I gladly give up the taxes to put that property back in use, you know, I've always said for the whole time I've been here, since I was a pro tem, I'm not here to represent an empty lot, we tear things down because we have no other choice. But, so we would be committed to take this program and, and really try to make a difference in doing that one thing.
So he would be designing the program for-
Yes.
Our situation here.
Yes.
And now, so you have the agreement not to exceed a certain amount.
Mm-hmm.
Just to design the program.
Correct.
Not to implement it.
Oh, no, that's totally separate, and I'll be coming back, we'll have to find the money, we'll have to do a budget amendment. At worst case, and, and we might have to, at worst case, we might wait till November, till a new budget. You know, it's gonna take a few months to iron all this out and, and get a system, it's gonna take a little while for myself and you all, and, and who, we gotta find a person, and then it's gonna take a while for us to understand this new system and how to implement it, I don't think it's something we can do overnight. So it might well be new budget, if I got two months to go, instead of, you know, squeezing it out of, at the very end of this budget, I might say, okay, we'll wait, we'll put the money in to hire somebody in the new budget, so it's kind of a long term, it's not a, it's not a sprint.
Okay, I was just wondering.
No, that's good, yes, sir.
And all of this is gonna come back to the council.
Yeah, it has to.
So the council will decide whether or not to enact the ordinance, whether or not to implement the program, what to do with the budget. So, the only commitment tonight would be to hire Mr. James to make a plan.
Correct. Anybody else?
Nope.
Well, I just wanna, you know, uh, congratulate him, and, you know, appreciate him following up, uh, tax dollars at work. Me and Ms. Johnson met McKinley and his wife at LM A, the LM A Convention in Alexandria. I think I met you a time before in Baton Rouge, and I introduced you to Ms. Johnson, you and your wife, his wife is a councilwoman as well, is, is a councilwoman. And we were in a adjudicated property, uh, seminar, in, in, in Alexandria. And we walked out together, and we start talking, and he, he had the plan, he had the deal, so, you know, thank you for showing up. And, uh, you know, those chance meetings, you know, they happen for a reason. You know, and when we, I knew he was from New Iberia, 'cause I met him a time before, and when we found out, Dee Dee found out he was from New Iberia, perfect match, and he's been following up, and looking forward to working with you, man, uh, thank y'all, uh, thank you for coming back and give back to New Iberia, you know, with your profession.
Yes, sir, and thank y'all for the opportunity, and I look forward to it, I really do.
Good.
And keep up the good work over there, and, yeah. And Karen Crowe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We know you struggle. Yes, ma'am.
I had the opportunity to, um, be at the meeting with, uh, Mr. James, and he was very impressive. I think he's gonna do a great job. Um, there's a great need for us as a, a city, city council, to do something with these properties. We just don't want them to sit there and become, in fact, they're a burden to the city. Uh, we're not collecting taxes, we mowing the grass, and it's just going on and on. So if some, if they're within the plan, uh, somebody is willing to take up all of this, and, and especially if it's next door to them, it would be a great thing, um, you know, to, to see this happen. And also, uh, partner with some nonprofits in order to build some, some houses on the properties. So that's what we're looking at, and, um, you know, in the ordinance group, um, we've talked about it, and we saw it was a great need, I did go to the meeting in Lafayette, and if we need some help, of course Lafayette, you know, agreed that they would help us in any way they could. So, I think this is a great thing for our city, and this is gonna be a big help to us. And thank you for wanting to undertake this.
As a side note, this is leading into some new housing developments, we're trying to partner with UL uh, to bring four new houses that they would do, uh, that's just a start. We are looking at a grant opportunity that we will be, uh, hopefully applying for in the next few months. So all those things are, are how we're gonna drive the market to find a use for these properties that have been abandoned, you know, that are just sitting there. So I think this is the first step of getting our ducks in a row, to where we can go back in and try to help some of these neighborhoods, uh, you know, rebuild and revitalize. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you all.
Four E.
Resolution number twenty-four dash seventeen, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the American Rescue Plan Act project, entitled West End Park Expansion, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter, uh, we have David here, uh, tell us about it.
All right, good evening, this is the, uh, substantial completion certificate for the West End Park Expansion Project, which is old Park Elementary School renovations that we did with Menville Lumber Company. Um, the work is substantially complete, and we included a punch list on some deficient items that they will be correcting. The work, just to remind y'all, it entailed a coating of the roof over the wing, that was closest to West End Park. Um, it included new HVAC mini split units in six of the classrooms. And also included, um, demolishing, a demising wall between two of the classrooms to create one larger space. That was the intent of the scope of work for the project. Any questions?
And we certainly aren't finished, we bought a school, we bought an empty school. We bought a school that didn't have a broken window pane, and after we brought it, bought it, we have two hundred broken window panes, because we had some acts of vandalism, and they must've been short like me, so I'm thinking it's little kids, 'cause it's all the low windows. Anyway, uh, with that said, you know, we have a project, uh, we are in the process of finishing up. I found a little extra money in the budget, and we're gonna spend about another forty thousand, where we're gonna replace those broken window panes. We're also adding security cameras, we are doing a few things to where we can get the senior citizen, which is the classrooms that we combined to make one room, I'm trying to get those open by the summer, and we'll have a computer lab. We don't have computers yet, but we're working on that, and we will partner to where eventually Boys and Girls Club, as well as our community, will be able to use that computer lab. Those are the first two things that we're trying to get operational, but that's one wing of the school, okay? Was it about two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project? I would say, you know, with this other money we putting in, you can say that it's gonna cost in the long run, if we did the whole school, three hundred thousand dollars a wing, it's still a, a, a great deal, because we added on to the park, we got a huge piece of property. Uh, some of it will never be renovated to this level. The police department is gonna use some of the building for training, so we don't have to fix that area up, just make it safe. Um, we're using some of the other areas of the school for storage, it is centrally located, it's a good spot that we have put things, and that's working. Um, so, the school is a long-term project, but to get this first wing operational really adds something to the park that they don't have, gives the community some, some new things, uh, and we did that because we took space for, from the teen side of the West End Gym of the MLK to do the Boys and Girls Club, which is up and running and doing really well, and that's all kids from the neighborhood. So we, we invest a lot of money for, for a lot of good. Uh, but just to tell you, we're not done, and you will hopefully be hearing about, we sometimes call it Park Place in the office, but you'll be hearing about Park Place pretty often, because we wanna continue to keep, keep moving in a, in a positive direction. So, questions, comments?
Yeah, man, I'm just, I mean-
Yes, sir.
I don't wanna be facetious, but I know you said it's probably some little kids, and I'm not that mad, because, you know, I remember being a kid and-
Mm-hmm, me too.
You know, this stuff like that, but y'all tell, uh, Spanky Alfalfa and Buck Wheat to settle down and, and let us fix the park up for them, you know, that was the good old days, though, a little rascal.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was easier then.
That was the good old days, but, uh, thank God, you know, they didn't, they, they didn't, none of them got hurt, you know, or anything like that, but, uh, I don't know, do we have any security measures?
We do now, we, we, that has gone in with this phase, we did some security, and we have done some fencing around some air conditioning units that were vandalized, we have added security cameras through the whole place. The police are now making extra patrols, I have some other surprises coming, so I think we covered on that now. But, uh, they hit us right at the transition, we bought the school before we started the proj- right, right as the project started. So, hopefully they realize now we're doing something good.
Yeah.
But kids will be kids.
Kids will be kids.
Yeah, we were both kids, and we, and we weren't good. Anybody else?
Girls didn't break glasses.
No.
I wasn't that child.
Well, if there's no other discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you very much, moving on to four F.
Resolution number twenty-four dash eighteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a proposal from Architect Paul Alder related to the Act three ninety-seven project.
I need a motion, so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dan Doyle, and a second, who got the second one? Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. These are our small projects for each district, correct? That we are trying to get done, that we need to get done by July, uh, the clerk will correct me, the last day of June, okay? Close enough, uh, anyway, so, we wanna hire Paul and David to kinda speed this up. We've all kinda given them their projects, and they've kinda, you know, going as far as they can until they get a contract, so that's what this is about. Questions, comments? Nope, all good? Uh, David, you can do these pretty quick?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we've already-
Okay, that, I know you, I know you've already started, but we had to.
Yes, sir.
Where's the, where the light poles in the city park, you, you got them laid out yet?
Uh, that's something that the mayor and I-
Okay, I was thought, maybe y'all have specific areas, I was just questioning.
Not that one yet.
No, it'll be along the walking trail, but we're gonna go kinda look at that at dusk and, and survey it.
Put some circuits, some, some, uh, receptacles on them.
Whatever happened to the light poles on West End, uh, on Hopkins Street?
Those are gonna end up going to West End Park, because we have plans to do a walking trail and add some lighting on their walking trail.
Okay.
So that's where those are going, I am trying to see if I can scoff something else for, uh, this one, if not, you know, we'll have to-
I didn't know if, in city park, if they can even change the lighting to some different lighting, to make a better spread, and not have to add poles.
That's possible.
In, in some areas, you know, um, I don't walk in the park, but my wife does.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's just the way some of the lighting is, it seemed like maybe clearing some trees and a different type lighting could accomplish some stuff to-
Correct, correct, so like, like the mayor said, we're gonna go and evaluate it at, at dusk when it's dark.
Okay.
And, uh, we have an electrical engineer involved on that project, too, so they'll assist in making those kinda recommendations.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Has the park equipment been ordered yet?
No, once, once we do this, David will quickly get all that together, and then we'll get it all ordered.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
And, man, uh, Dan, Councilwoman, Council, Councilman, uh, Doyle brought up a good point, those like, we have enough to do the whole, um, walking trail, or?
Probably not, but what we'll probably do is brace them out.
Spread them on the-
Yeah, and just spread them out and, and get what we can, and that's something that, before we do that, uh, I'm, we'll do the same thing. We'll go out there and look at it, and, you know, kinda see where we think it is.
You got a number, how many lights were removed off of, uh, Hopkins Street?
Yeah, I do, I do, I don't know what it is right offhand.
You don't know right off?
Yeah, but it'll be enough to make a big difference.
I think they gonna look good out there.
No, definitely, definitely.
They probably won't get vandalized in that, in, in the park.
Yep.
Let's hope, yeah.
It probably won't.
No, we've had- Look, we've been spending, we've been spending money in the park, well, we've been together for seven years, you know? We've been spending money in the park for seven years, and we haven't had any issues. I think, uh, the community embraces the park, and, you know, is, is, is a good partner, so we haven't had problems. Cool, if there's nothing else, please vote your machines. Thank you, David, we're gonna hurry.
All right, thank y'all.
All right, where am I at? Five G. Takes me a minute.
Resolution number twenty-four dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement by and between the City of New Iberia and the Garren Paul Acton Lewis Foundation relating to the disbursement of funds for the Teen Court Program.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gosselin. This is a partnership that we've had, uh, last year, this is our second year of doing it, and, uh, this foundation works real closely with City Court, for Teen Court, um, and that's kinda what we're funding again, or asking to fund again. Questions or comments?
Man, we, we do this every year, pretty much, or?
I think this is gonna be a yearly thing, we did it last year, I think as long as the program's going, this helps, uh, pay their overhead and, uh, some of their expenses, and like I said, when we get out of the deal, it's a great partnership with, uh, City Court.
And I'm just curious, who manages the money?
They do, they, uh, they utilize the money for overhead and for purchases for the program.
Okay.
Um, you know, we talk about it along, as we go during the year, and at the end of the year, I get a little report of kinda, you know-
Yeah, they have to account for it, so I remember the agreement, they have to account for the money and prove what they spent it on.
And they've switched more from office furniture to overhead, you know, they feed the kids, they do this, they do that. the kids, they do this, they do that, so the first year it was kind of an, it was really just to get him set up in the office. And we wanted to see how the foundation was gonna work, how, how many kids it was gonna touch, what was it gonna do, you know? But it, it is a good program, the judge likes it, uh, city prosecutor's very involved, you know, so we have some skin in the game too, from the, you know, city court employees or our employees, so, uh, we have some skin in the game as well and it's just, it's a good program.
Well, I can say I support it, that's why I made the motion.
Of course.
I just, you know, asked questions that, that's thanks to me.
Sure, sure. Somebody else? Then I ask you, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. FiveH.
Resolution number twenty-four dash twenty, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement by and between the city of New Iberia and Thor Guard LLC for the purchase of a light, lightning prediction system for the Pepperplex.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. This is for a light, lightning prediction system for the Pepperplex. We're about to have tournaments, we're starting to rent fields. What we have out there is not completely adequate, so we are quickly trying to put this in place. And it's just because of the growth, you know, we added, uh, buildings, we've done some renovations, we added some light poles, this, this is something that we, uh, we need to do.
This is just to control the lights, man?
No, no, this is for lightning protection.
Bad weather.
Bad weather.
That's all it's gonna do.
That's all it's gonna do.
And what happened if it doesn't protect it?
Whoa.
I'm trying to read this, I've never seen that before.
No, it makes a sound, whenever lightning's so far away or so close.
Right, when there's a potential for a lightning strike, potential for a lightning, potential for a lightning storm, thunderstorm, it won't come in through, it goes off so people can take cover and get off the fields and, uh, it covers all liability, really.
So, there's, there's systems put in, correct?
It's gotta be put in if you approve it, yes.
And then, it, 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 it alarms the, everyone that's at the park?
Yes, exactly.
Then it goes away when it, the, the threat is gone?
Yes.
And that's what it does.
Then it's play ball, that's what it does. And it's, uh, they have them in all the parks. They have them in Broussard, they have them in Youngsville. I knew nothing about this. We are through this big phase that we put in, I didn't realize we, I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, I didn't realize we needed this. Um, it was brought to our attention and then when I researched and realized that the other parks had it, you know, I was like, okay, we, we gotta step up.
So, this is coming through the funding through where?
We are going to, instead of buying a Tri-Max motor, mower, okay? Which was a fancy mower to do the fields. We've never had one before, we had sixty-one thousand dollars in the budget for some services and another forty-one thousand in the budget for the Tri-Max mower. So, we decided to park that thing, not buy it, and spend that money for this, 'cause this is much more important. And again, this is something that, you know, it's kinda snuck up on me. So, basically, we'll put that mower off to a future year because we getting by without it and we'll use some of the money that's already in the budget to do this.
So, the company is putting it in, are they from Florida or that's the way the company is, that's furnishing equipment?
I don't know. Uh, the, the company is Thor Guard.
Oh, okay.
So, they will install it and do everything, and they also do Broussard, they also do Youngsville. I didn't have a lot of choices, there weren't very many companies around that, that do this.
Now, I was just unaware of it.
Yeah, sure, no, I mean, yeah, I wasn't aware of it either, I had to school myself.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Safety first.
Yep, and I ask you, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Resolution number twenty-four dash thirteen, a resolution choosing a force of action related to certain railroad crossing closures by choosing from the following options. One, allow DOTD to proceed with the closure of Caroline, of the Caroline Street Railroad Crossing, or two, proceed with the process to authorize the closure of the Deer Street Railroad Crossing. Note, the city of Iberia does not have funds in the budget to facilitate, facilitate the cost of this closure.
I need a motion.
Move. Motion.
I have a-
So, is the motion to take it up, to do A, to do B?
The motion is to discuss it and then decide what we're doing.
So, there's no motion to choose a particular thing at this point?
No, I was just opening the motion so I wouldn't forget and then we do what we do best, which is talk.
Yep.
Uh, so I think I had a motion by Mayor Potem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman David Broussard. Okay, with that, I'll open up the floor. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, um, at the beginning, you did hear public comments from, um, people who live in the neighborhood, not necessarily on that street, but in that area, and I hope that my fellow council members did listen to them and, um, be sympathetic and think about what was said between A and B, uh, one and two. Um, I think the members who were here that spoke would like to have number two. Um, like I said, we needed to pretty much get a, um, an idea of what the neighborhood wanted to do, and we have, uh, quite a few people here from the neighborhood and they seem to want to, uh, do what was proposed years ago and offer up a different crossing. I'm finished, right, for now?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, yes, sir?
Since I haven't really been a railroad guy, you know, like, uh, Mr. Broussard and what have you.
None of us can be a railroad guy like Mr. Broussard.
And all our, all, all the crossings that were closed in, in the west end, which I represent, were closed when I got here, uh, did listen to people over the years, seven years, you know, and, and the consensus is that the residents doesn't, they don't want Caroline closed, so, uh, you know, but I understand when, between a rock and hard place, when DOT is making us, making us pay for the bill and, and the, and the, the price tag is, is pricey, uh, more than we can afford, right? But I mean, to see that people came not just from, um, Caroline Street, but from that area, Evansland Street, uh, you know, and, and, and all the other streets on, on that end is, is, you know, representation from the whole area, so it's bigger than just Caroline from what I'm gathering tonight. You know, I, I'm, I'm always about what the people want, but then we always have to look at what can we afford? You, even at my barber shop, you know, lady sent her son to the barber shop and she want a Mohawk, you know, and he got an Afro. I tell her, I say, you know, uh, we can do a Mohawk, it's gonna be forty-five dollars coming from an Afro. And she said, well, just cut it all even, I said, that's gonna be- It's always about the money, right? It always is, so I mean, if, I, I stand with, I stand with this constituents and what, what they want in their neighborhood, you know, but I also understand, uh, dollars and cents when it comes down to, uh, getting resources or not getting resources.
Yes, ma'am?
I feel like this is not even our call.
Right.
Um, it shouldn't be here. These people should be able to see the DOTD Railroad Company and express their concerns, like we've done, what, twice already? We met with them? Six times? So, maybe twice since I've been here in three years, which is a lot. Um, I don't like that it's being put on us, I feel like everyone wants it to stay open, which is great, we should not have to pay to move the arms. I don't know how to strong-arm DOTD into making them do the right thing, listen to the people like we have to do. This is crazy to me, like, we should not be voting on it. Like, I just, that's how I feel, like, this is not our call. They need to stop putting it on us like we're the bad guys. They're the ones trying to force our hands. I don't know.
Yes, sir.
Uh, man, this street, I was here with twenty years ago, sitting right here, maybe not twenty, um-
Oh, yeah, it was twenty.
It was probably twenty. And this room was packed with the same street. And we fought it, and I think the railroad, like you said, they put it on us to make us like, we can't make a decision. We had four from Lewis Street that I recall from the twenty years I've been here, moving west on this side, they closed four rail, um, crossings that we fought and they closed them. The money and prior to that, we didn't have the crossings. People don't understand the history of the crossings. 'Cause of David Broussard, we got the crossings to save lives.
And what's it worth that we have?
That was money that came from Overpass, 'cause that's how long I've been here prior-
I was here.
-to go over the railroad track, to have a way to get over the railroad track, to have a hospital where people could get to, but both hospitals was here. And you know DOTD or railroad, like, bah! So, Mr. Broussard got a bunch of money and thankfully he got the money, brought it to this city for us to put crossings. Okay, that's why we got crossings, to save lives.
He also funded part of the Armoco Canal.
That's right. With this money that DOTD and the railroad was here first, we have no say. People are saying, we, we spent thousands of dollars way before, when I was here twenty years ago, fighting them, and we lost every battle, every battle. So, they, they care, they were here before New Iberia was there. They make the call, I'm with you. No matter what we do, they're gonna do it. They're, they're gonna do what they're gonna do. Now, you know, I, I'm, I have a little, I have a business on Caroline, if you cross, it goes to me, but it doesn't matter because they're gonna do it. We didn't win one battle, not one battle with railroad yet, all these years. We prolonged it, we made it longer to a point where they just kept going down, going down, going down, closing this one, not that one, closing this one, not that one, but we running out of them. And, you know, rolling down, going down the streets today, when you go down Caroline, you got seven roads to go get out. Deer Street, that's not a long street, that's two, to get in and out with a fire truck, ambulance or whatever. And we brought the argument about having nursing home, having assisted living, all that was brought to them prior. 'Cause they hadn't, uh, right when we fought the battle, they had the nursing home, they didn't have the assisted livings in the back. So, we got that, we told them, we got them now. We put all that on the table, it didn't matter. I mean, that's how long we've been fighting these people, man, they, and like I said, w- we, we're here looking like the bad guys and we have no say. We can vote no, can vote yes, it's gonna happen. But the main thing is, is that we don't have a half a million dollars to put the railroad, to put the crossing. But if one car gets across and someone gets killed, then the blame comes on us. And, and, you know, it's just hard, I'm, I'm telling you, I, I understand, but one thing about Deer, it goes to Font Lou, that Font Lou goes to Amador, but there's not much area to get in and out of that area, even though the area's small, even though Deer Street doesn't have a lot of people, it just doesn't have much area to get safety equipment in there and, and people to get in and out. I mean, I rode it today, and you talking about, you know, between Byard and, and Caroline, maybe three-hundred-and-fifty feet, I understand completely, but, you know, I, I just think they got our hands tied and, you know, what we do tonight, they're gonna do anyway. We're just doing our homework and trying to do our best for the citizens, but at the end of the day, railroad company own this. They can make it happen without our blessing or not. We prolonged it, but I think those days are coming to an end. Timeline, they put the signs, you see everything, it's, it's gonna happen without our blessings or not. So, it, it's just tough. I just wanna let you know the history, 'cause I was here when it was packed, most of these people passed away, some of them, that was sitting here. I mean, that's how far back it, it, um, we've been fighting this, this issue.
You were there, I was the pro team.
Yeah, I mean, we just moved seats, yeah, you know? And I wanna applaud Mr. Broussard for getting that money to put these crossings, you know, and, and we, we said, hey, let's use the crossings from Deer and bring it here. They won't let it, it won't happen. So, so what do you do? I mean, so as soon as you could do Deer Street where these people might not have as much access to get to Amador, they could come here and complain. You, you know, I understand it, it's just tough, dude, it's just, you know? And, um, I just wanna let you know the history and then we're just gonna have to make the decision because if not, they making it anyway for us, honestly.
Thank you.
And, uh, the biggest thing you covered, we woke up one morning and Leon Prairie's gone.
Yeah.
Closed, we woke up, we had no say-so, no, nothing. Now, there, the only reason we here tonight is the state is afraid of all the politics of people that live on Caroline. We don't wanna close Caroline, we don't wanna close any of them. We don't wanna do that. But they afraid of these people right here, they don't wanna come do like they did on the, uh, Leon Prairie and a few others. They just coming close when they wanna close. You know, so they wanna make a big thing right now and I'm fighting them today. They told me, don't call the state people no more, call legal. You out of the state, you stop playing with those guys. We talking about legal and the head guards at DOTD are fighting this battle right here and I'm putting it right back on them. They afraid of these people right here to come close it. Now, we never said for them to come close it, I never said for them to come close it, but we got the other ones up and we fighting to get every arm and light going through New Iberia with arms and lights. Every crossing. Yeah, we use federal money, we the only place in the nation use federal money, a million and a half dollars from two thousand and five. I got that for the Overpass first, we still have to worry about that. And I think it'll happen someday, but before I lost it, I had them ask mayor, call me up, middle of the night, I'm taking care of my dad. Wanna move your money before we lose it, Miss Curry? I thought, no, we're not moving it to no service road or this road or that road. Finally, I thought about it, the only other safe, safety thing I could move this federal money to was arms and lights at the railroad tracks, so I've been fighting that ever since. So, I wanna fight for the people too. I love all of y'all, I kept with this guy in the red shirt when he was a little kid. We drove bus for twenty years together, you know, Mr. Antoine? So, it's not that we don't care about you, they don't care about you. I'm telling all of the truth, we fighting this too long. And if we have to vote, uh, they gonna do it anyway, so if we vote, uh, send a letter for them to come close it, that's all we can do. You know, I'm finished with that and, uh, I hope they heard all this. And, yeah, we get emotional about safety. And we have a lot of, you can't, you can't, nobody can say a word when they don't have arm and light, that that's not safety. Somebody knows almost every crossing they've had through their life. Some of those, Bank Street, you don't hear any trouble no more, 'cause they put arm and light. Car, Colleen, don't hear any trouble no more. So, I said my piece and the big thing is that, don't blame the messenger. Blame the big dog that's, that doesn't wanna come say what I'm saying right here, we can do it 'cause we did it before and we can come do it again. Yeah, you're right, they closed Leon Prairie, I was surprised, wake up one morning, the, the, the fire truck, I'm kinda glad closed it, 'cause that was a shortcut, he got on my butt about closing, uh, I thought it was Prairie over there, big banana trees, couldn't see nowhere around it and gonna send the fire truck over that thing, can't see the train coming. So, yeah, we have bank up, we have Evansland up, Mr. Antoine? Deer, yeah, Deer. They not, they not, they checked it out, they gonna go three-quarters of a mile down Font Lou, turn down a little narrow street, come back to Deer and come back and get the fire or whatever. They, they, they looked at that. I was surprised when they put Deer up first, you know, one of the first ones, because they, they look for the safety. So, I'm tired talking about this for eighteen years, it's a lot. And it's time to get things done. I thank y'all.
Yeah, so, not been on the previous councils, but I think previous councils and this council as well ha- has done their due diligence. I think the people have spoken, I, I hear your concerns, and I would be concerned as well, but, I mean, this is just a classic case of David and Goliath, and David's not winning this battle. Goliath's gonna take over, so, I mean, the state has called its card, and look, they really holding us hostage to other, to two other railroads crossings. Both have safety issues, so, I think, uh, I think that, uh, you know, we, we, we moving forward, closing this one, but in, in the big scheme of things, we are getting lights and crossings at two more that are gonna, gonna be safe for our community. And as elected officials, it's two, Providence and.
We're getting more, how many, how many crossings are we getting, totally? What are the crossings they have left?
Iberia Week's Julia French.
So, four more, so, so by, by. I wasn't here for those two. So, uh, but, so by, by, really, by, um, by closing this crossing, we're gonna get four more crossings with lights and arms that are gonna protect our community, and, and we all up here to, to make sure that we protect our community as elected officials in every manner, so, that, do we agree with it? No, but, at the same time, we, we see the handwriting on the wall where, where it's gonna happen, so, um, I think that it's time to move forward on this project.
I have another comment.
Okay, everybody else spoke once, yes ma'am.
The letter said that if we wanted to, um, put up Deer Street instead, we had to go through the process. Why don't we go through the process? Doesn't cost you anything to go through the process. They did not, on that particular letter, give a price as to how much it would be if Deer was closed, and we had to put cross, the, the crossing arms at Caroline. Was not on that letter, this last letter. We also now have a new person that's in charge for DOTD. We have not spoken to that person either. So, there's a lot of different things that are going on right now. It's my suggestion that we go with number two, go through the process again with Deer, and see what happens. Now, everybody seems to wanna, you know, uh, it's been twenty years, it's been this amount of time, you know, they gonna do what they wanna do. Well, if we do what we need to do, and then they still do it, then we have proven to our constituents here that they were gonna do it. But now, we, we're just saying, okay, we're just gonna let them go on and do, we not go offer up what was offered twenty years ago, or ten years ago, however long it was. But we should go through that process again, and also, it's an open house, I mean, it's a, a town hall, people on Deer Street to come in and all, and say what they need to say about the closure. I think we definitely need to continue the process, it's a process. Now, we selling out one street or crossing for some things that have already been paid for, now that doesn't even make sense. You know, so say DOTD is holding money for the crossing arms because of this? That's who we should be, we should really be maybe illegal about that. That doesn't even make sense, for them to hold up some stuff that should've been done years in your, in your first term. Not this, not this seven years you've been in, but the term before we talking about. So, there's some issues there with DOTD, and I think, um, we need to fight this fight. You've heard from the people, the last time we had a bunch of people in here was about the speeding. Oh, everybody was like, oh, we need to do something about this, we need to do something about this, let's cut down this, cut down that. Well, you've got some people tonight, but yet you wanna just go on and let it go. I say, let's give it a shot, offer Deer, go through the process, and then see what happens.
One of our six meetings that we've had in here with people and everything, didn't we come up with one time that we all shared expense, sent a letter to the state, that we pay a hundred thousand dollars?
We tried that.
They told us no.
That was our, uh, approach last year.
We tried.
And we tried that, and then six or seven months, don't quote me the months, but six or seven months later, I got that snarky letter. Cause that's the nicest word I can say. I got that letter that we all are talking about.
Trying to move the Deer Street to Caroline, they didn't wanna use, use the equipment.
They did say no, and they said they would not be okay.
So, we offered money.
And the letter said, whatever the, didn't say the expense, but it said that we would bear the expense, and they turned down the money that we tried to partner with.
So, six meetings we've had here on this subject, back and forth. Every time the state would send a letter, we had a meeting. Every time we sent a letter, you go and send this letter here, you know, we had a meeting. So, we've had, uh, we've had, uh, six times, people have chances to come see what they gotta see. And we've answered the state six different times, uh, this going back and forth too much. You know, so, they did come and close Lee and Prairie without asking us at all. Um, I think they just beating the bushes one way or the other, Mr. Mayor, and we offered money to go halfway meet them, to move that equipment. They didn't accept that either. So, we've had our hearings on this matter, where Deer Street could show up, just as good as Caroline could show up. And, uh, I hope they know we've been fighting both ways, we, we offered a hundred thousand dollars right here. They didn't take it. So, it's not like we're not fighting for the people, we fought to do that. In six different meetings we've had in here, I don't know of anything else that we ever talked about that many times, that we didn't care, cause we wouldn't put it on the, on our agenda. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting it on our agenda, you're a person to give and take, but, uh, we did offer some money, they denied it, so we covered that ground on Deer, to try to move it. We covered that a while back, so we had our wish in right here.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, um, well, first of all, I wanna say, uh, come in, uh, we're under the United States Constitution, Louisiana constitutions, they give cities autonomy to do what they need to do in the city. They don't come in, interfere with paving roads on Corrine Street, or St. Pete, or Mann Street. A- and, and as a result, they tell us, without telling us, don't interfere with our railroad, our state highway, or anything like that, right? We don't, we don't have no say on state highways. When we, how long we been waiting on Hopkins Street? My street, that everybody get, I get blamed for Hopkins Street, and it's a state highway. And I, that's all I know, is that they hard to fight, and they do what they wanna do. Uh, I'm saying autonomy, because I don't wanna say they don't care, they just give us the autonomy to do what you need to do on your stuff, and we gonna do what we need to do on ours. Now, what I want to ask, what's, what is the process, refresh me on the process? Is it a process of public hearing where the public come address DOTD, or they come address us?
They make us do it.
That's what I'm saying, so, that's happening now, right?
Unfortunately, we do all, cause we've done it in the past. We used the Sliman in the past, we spent our own money to put up signage, we spent our own money to run ads in the paper, they don't reimburse us for any of that. One time they came, and I tried to put them on the spot, uh, a- and then they got mad at me, uh, because they came, but they said, we're not gonna comment, we don't take any questions, we don't comment, this is the city's meeting. And I said, well, wait, wait a minute, you know, you coming and doing what you gonna do anyway, and I do believe that, but you're coming to tell us what you're gonna do, and then we have a public hearing about your project, and you won't even contribute? You won't answer any question, what kind of bullshit is this? Oh, excuse me. Anyway, so, that's exactly what I said then, and, uh, they weren't happy with me, I apologize. But, uh, that's how it went, so, we, we had a public hearing, but basically, it's us, uh, it's all on us. You know, when I was the pro team and sat here, I made motion after motion, Dan was there, Mr. Broussard was here, of saying, and I remember we did that a few times, we're not gonna have an opinion, you're gonna do what you're gonna do, we wanna keep them all open, we represent our community, so we not making a decision. If it's yours, and you're gonna drive the bus and run over us while you're driving the bus, then you do it yourself. And we sent them, I don't know if y'all remember that, we sent them resolution after resolution, and said, we're not having an opinion, because you bullying us, and you trying to make us do, take the, the brunt of, that you taking the action, and we getting hit. So, you know, we're not gonna put up with it, and so, we used to send them resolutions, and say, we're not doing anything, we're not making a decision, it's your railroad, and you represent all of us, and you, uh, come through our community, and DOTD, you are a state agency, and we are citizens of the state, so, why don't you step up? And we tried that, we got run over every time, but, but that was the stance we used to take. Um, but you're right, the public hearing would be us, we would hear, uh, we don't have any money to contribute. I didn't understand, I know I'm a contractor, and I do a ton of remodeling, and I do, if you know me privately, I don't throw anything away, and I renovate everything, and I repurpose everything. I didn't understand why they couldn't just take Deer Street and move it over, and, and there would be no money exchanged. Then you could have a public hearing, there'd be a clean thing, and no money was, uh, involved, and you could make a decision. But, you know, to, to always put a hook, they always gotta put a little line that says, whatever, we're not, you're not following our plan, so you have to pay. Uh, and that, I don't quite understand that, but basically, to get back to your answer, the public hearing would be us, and they're not gonna, if, if they show up at all, they don't answer any questions.
Do, will they, do they have to show up?
No, they don't.
We did one, and they showed up, and then I believe, because.
That's why I say it's kinda like.
Put those guys on the spot, they didn't come the next time.
What, what is the?
No.
I'm just asking you, cause I'm gonna support whatever you wanna support.
The, the deal is, you have to have a, like he said, at a, a different place, it can't be at, at our meeting, right. Yeah, Mr. Broussard was talking about meetings we had, but that's what, that, that was these meetings, not separate meetings he's talking about.
We, we did have a couple of public hearings that were separate.
Well, we had one.
Sliman, yeah.
One at the Sliman. Just one at the Sliman, and that was to save Caroline and Providence, okay? If we do, uh, the hearing that offering Deer Street, that would be a different, um, you know, open house.
Should we exclude Providence now?
Providence is over, they done figured it.
That's what I'm saying, so, it would be different, cause we excluding Providence.
Providence is done.
So, essentially, we're saying, hey, look, wait, no, we just wanna do Providence this, uh, or Deer this time.
So, yeah, so the process that we went through then, uh, to save Caroline and Providence, we'd have to go through again, which is a public hearing. You, um, take comments from people in the audience, they write on, on, uh, given sheets, and then we send it all in. At the last one, they were there, um, like, he said, they didn't say anything, uh, and they took the information. But then we didn't hear from them for a long, long time, and my thing is now, we have a new administration, so all of this other stuff happened before the new administration has come in, and we need to see what they're gonna do, new people. So, it, it may not be the same thing. I'm just saying, give it a chance.
Uh, don't, don't have a question, Mayor and Councilman Leb, is it a cost, there's a, there's a, is it a cost for us to repeat this process? Well, repeated with our Providence Street, is it a cost to the city other than, you know, facilitating it at the Sliman?
Uh, we have to put, we have to pay for signs, we have to put signs up, we have to post, which cost us, we, uh, do public notices, we have to put, you know, Daylberian is our official journal, we have to run ads in the Daylberian, so we have to pay for that, we have to pay Public Works to make the signs, we have to put signs up, we have to take them down when we're finished, uh, we use the Sliman, whatever cost, I mean, we own the Sliman, I guess there's some cost with that, we would use the Sliman to hold the public hearing, uh, so there are some costs and some effort. Uh, we do normally get a police officer there, uh, that's some, some money. Am I forgetting any steps, uh, Madam Clerk? I mean, that's what it would take, you know. But the big thing is, we don't, you know, we put it in the resolution for a rea- cause I don't talk smack. We put it in the resolution that, you know, if you do a public hearing, people might think that we're really gonna beat the giant. I don't like to egg on, or to lead my citizens on any kinda way. I don't know if we'd beat the giant. I also know that if they say, okay, it's gonna cost some money, we don't have any money in our budget to do that. So, they pushing on us, and they got us, like, up against the wall, that whatever decision we make tonight, we don't win. Whatever decision we make tonight, we're not, as, as Councilwoman Mark I said, it's not our project, it, it's very weird that, you know, we're put in this position, I would love it if they were here, or if they were making a decision, but we would have some cost involved.
We do, if we do have this hearing, the state finally shows up, they come up with the same idea that we did on letters already, y'all go move it, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, move it from Deer to Caroline. We don't wanna spend that kinda money, we offering them a hundred thousand, so we back at square one, square one again, after that hearing. I know that's gonna be the answer, you know, probably, I mean, darn. But they have new people, old people, I don't think that's gonna change a lot. But if they offer the same thing after that hearing, well, move it, if y'all wanna pay, we'll be glad to move it. But then, uh, on Deer Street, there is that safety factor, you gotta go three to three quarters of a mile down Font Lou, where you can't turn down one of their little narrow roads, cause I drove that in my school bus, it's hard to turn on that narrow road, and come back up three quarters of a mile to the fire, or to the incident, cause it's dead end, you know, there's no more crossing at Deer. So, they, that's why they put the thing at Deer, I didn't, I didn't realize they're putting it at Deer, I was surprised. Because they must've thought of that safety reason, and they put it there, they were talking about putting a, a road against Deer, along Deer, to Font Lou, along railroad track, from Deer to Font Lou, but they gave up on that, cause they couldn't get enough property. They were talking about that, then closed Deer, but they couldn't get that done. So, we talked, uh, I, we talked, and we're, we're not the villain, the state is the villain. And darn, they talking not too nice to me, so I'm not talking nice to them either. Let's get this project done. Been fighting, and poor Miss Adele, it's her name, huh?
Annabelle.
Annabelle.
Annabelle, yeah.
Man, 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 look.
Yeah.
Oh, boy, look, she was a character. I took her words.
Oh, yeah, very much so, she come to all our meetings.
Sorry, we, we not against y'all, but we not against anybody in this room, the state is.
My final comment is, what is it gonna hurt to, to go through the process again? What is it gonna hurt? It's not gonna cost us an arm and a leg either. You, if you have something to say, say it loud, you know. Was not speaking to you.
Please stick to the subject.
Let's go through the process and see what happens. Like I said, we have new people, let's see what happens, and then if they, if that's their final deal, then that's the final deal. But they gave us this opportunity to offer this up again, and I think we should take it.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a random question, it's not really random, but is it normal for the railroad to do stuff like this?
A hundred percent.
To other communities?
In my experience, as my two terms as pro team, and my seven years as mayor, yeah, this is pretty standard operating procedure.
It's so shady, they're literally holding stuff captive.
Mr. Broussard, somebody has been here, you know, y'all, yeah.
I've heard they've closed a bunch in Jannarat.
Yeah, this is our work.
Jannarat's tiny compared to us, like, we're pretty big, and we have the volume going down these streets, and for them to wanna close.
Higher than the na- and really, it's the railroad that's running the show, DOTD is caught in the middle. I'm not taking up for DOTD, because I don't like the way some of these things are handled, but the railroad's driving the bus, so the railroad looks at every community and says, now, they probably set the standard, okay? It's, it's, uh, it's kind of a weird deal. So, they put this standard in, you can only, you should only have so many crossings per community, per mile of track, okay? Well, we don't fit that standard, so from twenty years ago, they were saying so many have to close, because it's, you know, for every mile of track, it's what they want, less maintenance. I'm not saying it's not less safety factor either, because that's less crossings and less opportunity for an incident, for an impact. But, they came up with the rules to begin with, and then they go to every community and enforce these rules, and say, okay, New Iberia, you gotta close seven crossings, because you have more than the industry standard, that they probably set. Uh, but that's how it works, I mean, that's, that's what we're called in, so, yes, ma'am, my, my answer is, this is pretty much, uh, SOP, standard operating procedure.
And it's normal not to reuse arms.
Yeah, they say they never do that.
We're taking their word for it, that that's legit.
Yes, they, I mean, they gonna tell you their insurance company won't let them, they gonna tell you that there could be some liability, you know, those kinds of things.
I don't like that, number one, you know, all of us have said that we don't want it closed. Number one, the resolution says to allow DOTD to proceed with the closure. I don't think anyone wants to allow them to, from what I'm, I'm hearing tonight. Um, at the same token, we don't wanna pay whatever bill they try to send us, um, but I mean, we're also representing all these people, though it may not be our district, you know, we represent the city. You know, so I feel like we do need to listen to their concerns, and, um, I don't know, it just feels so strange about the way they're handling things, the railroad, I'm talking about, um, trying to make us the face of the closures. It, it's not okay, it doesn't sit well with me. Um, I know everyone's ready for it to be over with, I am too, I'm tired talking about the railroad, but, we represent people that want their railroad crossing to stay open, so, I'm down to do whatever we need to do, even if it's just ignoring them. I mean, if we can ignore them, and they go away for a while, they've done it previously.
I didn't put that option down, you can take the third option in the letter, which says, if you don't respond by, I think it's April twenty.
April something.
Four, twenty. If you don't respond by April thirtieth, we're gonna do what we want.
Let them do what they want.
I mean, you know, I'm just saying, that's, that's the way they ended the letter. And I'm bringing it back to you, like I bring it back to this council with that, you know, we, we a team. Uh, you know, we can have difference of opinions for various reasons, and that's okay. But, that's the other choice, I guess, is say, I'm not doing anything, and see what they do on April the thirty, or whatever that date is. Yes, sir.
So, I mean, we, we've been discussing it, and everybody has valid points, and, but, I mean, in the resolution the mayor put, you know, even if we do go to public hearing, even if we do take the steps. in the resolution the mayor put, you know, even if we do go to public hearing, even if we do take the steps, we don't have the money to close it. Where are we gonna get the money? Days will come back to us and say, well, where do we gonna get the money? What are we gonna say? We don't have the money. So I think the point's irrelevant to where, where we, we did our due diligence, we've asked, we begged, we pleaded, we tried to close, we heard from the people, other people heard from the people. Nobody can fault this council for doing anything wrong. This council's just following what the DOTD is trying to threaten us to do. So I'll make the motion that we accept number one and move forward and close Caroline.
Um.
Okay, I have a.
I had a comment, though.
I know, but I, I have a motion on the floor, so I have to see if there's a second. Is that correct?
Yeah. And then you can have discussion on that motion.
Yes, yes, I mean, that doesn't end the discussion, but, so I have a motion on the floor for, uh, number one of our possible choices.
I'll second it.
I have a second, so I have a motion by Mayor Phil Jimmer-Giegongland, a second by Councilman David Bruce Art. Now that's on the floor, so we open up discussion for that item.
Well, I, I want to make a motion that we do number two, if I can get a second.
She can make a motion?
Well, but you already have a motion on the floor.
First, we deal with this motion, then we deal with another motion.
Right, right.
I'm trying to go the right way, we don't have this happen often.
Can we talk on this motion?
Yeah, that, right now, the floor is open to talk on this motion.
Okay, can I talk on it?
Councilman Dog, yes, I'm calling on you.
Okay, we talked about making a decision, and with this decision, we have arms and crossing that we need and some other crossings, right? So, that, is that part of this agreement with them? They would do these arms and crossing at these locations if we tell them which one to close?
These are the last ones under demand, is these two, Providence and Caroline. After that, we finish closing crossings.
But Pro- Providence is closing.
I know, that's two last ones, so we have one that they're not talking about no more, cause of done deal.
Right.
And, uh, Caroline.
Is the only one that.
Or the other one, and they supposed to be go- we, we lived up to our standard, when they closed Lee Prairie and another one way downtown. So we, we have them where they're not talking about anything else, that's why we supporting.
But they can put the arms and crossing at no cost to us.
Iberia Weeks, Julia and French.
Okay.
We gotta put those up.
Um.
And every crossing will, there will be a, an arm, arm and lights at every crossing. Some towns have where you have every arm and light up, they can zoom through ten miles an hour faster without too many horns being blown, cause the crossings are, are being closed, open, they can close. So they have a lot of towns, and when they have all arms and lights, that they can just zoom through if all arms and lights are working. They just zooming through in about ten miles an hour faster than they used to do and just get out of our way. So it's all kind of things, but these are the last two. We've been fighting that for eight, ten years to get to these last two. Now, they have stuff on Jefferson Street, a pile of limestone, they supposed to raise the track six inches, cause of a flood they had in the trough. Raise the track, and that's some old track we have, that's some old iron in the middle of town, cause I watch them changing from the outside of town to Lafayette, outside of town to Generec, new iron, that's old iron. So they got the big stack of limestone ready to go, they got some, uh, iron on top of cross ties, stacked eight or ten high, a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet long, ready to go. So this railroad's getting ready to do something, and we just need to be in order. I hope the state gets in order what we doing here, that we did everything. We did, uh, the appropriation of land for the boxes. Had to work hard with the parish and the churches, had to work real hard. Get them to get all that appropriation of land, to put the new boxes up for the arms and lights. So, yes, uh, if they come do these two, they shouldn't say a word about us doing anything else.
Comment?
Yes, no, no, I don't know who was first, I don't.
Yeah, I don't either, uh, I.
Well, if you say what I said, then I'm not gonna say.
No, I, I'm just saying, I, I don't remember us ever getting anything right and saying that they were gonna, um, put those arms and those crossings after they, years ago.
Six crossings we need to close, they thought they put us off, but we got those four done.
But, and, and the thing was, that was money that you had appropriated for, for another project that was moved to that. So that should not have anything to do with this. I, I know, that's what I'm talking about, but it was money that was allocated to the city, per se.
I got three million dollars, uh, sitting right there.
Exactly, so why should that have anything to do with these crossings, these closings and everything?
They brought three million dollars.
That should've been done years ago. That should've been done years ago, when, when you appropriated that money. So, uh, you know, I don't see how both things go together, because seems like that was already paid for, all these things already paid for.
We just followed.
And, and if there was no price in this last letter that we got. But it seems like we can find money for all kinds of things that we want to find money for when it, when it comes that time. You know, if we want to buy this, you know, oh, I'mma, I'mma look in that budget and I'mma find that money, you know? This is crossing arms. Uh, we don't know if this new person would let us move the crossings to another cross. You know, it, it just depends on what's going, who's in charge at the time. Uh, they change policies, they do a lot of things in new administrations. And we're just gonna say, oh, we've been through it all, all this time and everything, and, and we're just gonna give up. But they giving us an opportunity to at least go through the process again. And that's the only thing that I'm asking, that we do the process again to close another street. And if then they say we owe five hundred thousand dollars, then we cross that bridge when we get to it. And then we look at it again then. But like I said, we can find money in our budget for things that we want to do. And I think that our constituents deserve us to be able to find some money if everything goes the way it's going, and, and we offer up another crossing, to do that, to make that particular crossing safe. It's about safety, right? Didn't we say it was about safety? So we should be able to find that money within our budget for safety purposes.
One last fact.
You were done?
Yeah.
For now.
No, that's fine.
One last fact. In this chamber, was seven, eight years ago, Mr. Mills and the full delegation stood right here and gave us three million more to finish all the arms and lights down the middle of town. Dedicated for that. I've been chasing that, we're gonna see where they spin it, to get that done. So that's a fact right there from Mr. Mills, and the full delegation promises three million more, more, to finish Iberia Weeks, Julia and French after we close the crossings that we have to close. So that was a fact that sat right there, and, uh, it was seven, eight years ago that came down. And, uh, but that six crossings been there for years, we had to close.
We didn't get the money.
Huh, yeah, it was dedicated, dedicated through the state, three million more. Three million more for that dedication of arms and lights at the railroad track. Yeah, we got it, cause they spent a lot of it already on surveys, on, uh, drainage, on all kind of other mon- other ways. I've followed, I've been following it.
Went to the railroad.
We went to the study.
Yeah, but it didn't go to us.
But no, not to us. No, no, we never saw it.
Just want to make that clear.
No, the city council.
I mean, people are gonna think we got that money.
The state, the, the state, no, but the, the state, the state.
All I'm saying is, we didn't get the money.
The state dedicated that in the hat, uh, at the state. So I want to make sure that was understood, that we understood, we got that three million from Mr. Fred Mills, come out of his mouth right there.
They got it.
Yeah, the state is holding it for our use.
Just want to make sure people understand.
For our use. And so we added everything in place.
Their use in our community.
Yeah, but it might've got used three or four other ways since then.
That's exactly right, we didn't control that.
They still made that dedication.
Understand.
You know, that should mean a lot.
Yes, sir.
No, I just want to ask, and I'm piggybacking off of Dan's question, and I'm trying to understand, did the state ever say, if you, if, if you, like a bargaining chip, we, we not, we not holding, we holding them, them crossings until y'all make a decision on Caroline Street?
Yeah.
They said that?
DOTD has said, we need to close all those crossings and know what we closing before we come do this project. They haven't told me that lately, but yes, I have, that has come out of their mouth.
So they basically saying, we need to know.
Yeah.
Again, what the people really want.
We're gonna come to spend. We're gonna spend the money and arm the arms and lights as you meet the state, or whatever this railroad requirement is of how many crossings you have in your community. So from the beginning, from way back, we knew we had to close a, a number, we knew where the number was. We had to close so many crossings for them to come and finish the job.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying.
They said that, yeah, I don't think that's a secret.
I'm just saying, I'm for number two, uh, and giving them the process again, cause again, we dealing with, we dealing, man, we dealing with simply time and money. That's what we dealing with right now. Time and not as much money as we have to pay if they say the same thing that they said before. Oh, yeah, y'all can have it, but y'all gotta pay for it, then we gotta make another decision, which, after that, I'm not, I'm not going down that road again. I'm not going down that road again, but I'm all forgiving, it's like a second chance thing, right? I'm all forgiving the public a second chance to address DOTD, who may not even show up, then they really addressing us. And the railroad own it, DOT is a partner with them, right? The railroad on the tracks and DOT on the right of way or something like that, how'd that go?
Pretty much, pretty much.
They go, they on the right of way, so.
Well, the railroad has their own right of way, DOTD has the crossings. DOTD maintains, the railroad does their part, the apron, if you will, on each side, that's, that's where DOTD comes in.
State.
And some kind, railroad's a private entity, so the money comes to DOTD, and then it goes to the railroads. Cause it's federal money, so federal, you know, it, it, it runs through DOTD. And DOTD probably has some fees they collect, uh, and, you know.
When I'm hearing, when I'm hearing DOTD, when you put up, uh, arms and lights, DOTD has to pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each one to put them up at the railroad. And we have to maintain them for like five years, then the railroad adopts them. So that's why DOTD is, DOTD is so much about closing them all over the state, cause they think they saving the constituents a lot of money. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each crossing, like they did in Generec. Three crossings they closed, they have three right there, and that was done eight, nine years ago. So they've been doing this, so it's the state paying the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each one. And we got them off the hook, cause we use federal money to put Evangeline Deer Bank in Corina. That was federal money. We had two hundred thousand dollars left, and I kind of made a move on some of those that came through and gave me three million more, gave us three million more, because they moved it to a state project. And, uh, they wanted to be finished with it, but it should've finished with it seven, eight years ago.
Again, and, and I, one more comment.
Sure.
Mayor, you, and you said something about liability. I could see, I mean, you, you talking about BNSFF, or the railroad and DOTD. These people, we not talking about moving a piece of Cypress off Old House on the Bay and putting it on another old house on Main Street. We talking about moving a mechanical arm that can break once you take it up and move it somewhere else, and moving it to the other, to the other, uh, so I could see the liability on the state. The state ain't gonna repur- it, does the state, y'all been in government long, y'all think the state gonna re- repurpose a mechanical?
What they gonna do with it?
Not liabilities, it's just all new.
I, I just, right.
They just throw it away, now come on.
But they throw it, do you realize how much the state throw away because of that?
They do it just what you said, liability.
With everything, they throw a lot away.
To me, that makes no sense.
Lot of things in government don't make no sense. A lot of things in government don't make no sense. But I can understand that, I can totally understand that. That's like, oh, LeBlanc Honda taking a, they ain't gonna take that, or they wreck that car leaving out the lot, we're gonna take this transmission off this wrecked car, it's new, but we're gonna put it on this other wrecked car that's new. They ain't doing that, both them cars gone away because of the liability. And they could be perfectly good, they go on to the junkyard somewhere and somebody else can use it maybe for something else, but they definitely not gonna repurpose them. So I can't, I can understa- all I'm saying is I can understa- I'm with the process, but I gotta let you know what I understand. You know, I don't have, but I think it's fair that I let you know what I do understand. And I understand that not repurposing an electric, electrical mechanical device that can create liability. You know, I made you put on cross, I made you put up crossings for liability and safety of my trains running through your town, and now I'm gonna repurpose one, you know? That, that's, I, that don't make sense to me.
Yeah, I worry about, I worry about the liability that we don't have all the arms and lights. I think about that often, that, you know, people get hit, we had, I don't wanna bring stuff up, but we had a, a recent death not too long ago, uh, where a train hit a van, and I worry all the time that, I just want to see this done, because I, I worry I got crossings that aren't covered. Uh, we've had some incidents where cars hit trains, instead of the train hitting them. We've had some weird stuff that, you know, I love my town, but our driving is not great. So there are times that I'm like, I just want this over with, because I want to know that that train can go through town and my cars aren't gonna run to the train, you know, my drivers. Uh, it would be nice, and will be nice, when we finally have them all protected and all covered, just because we've had some close calls and we've had some incidents, uh, you know?
Yeah.
Anyway, and I don't want that to happen in the middle of my town, like what happened at the airport where the truck stalled, so the guy, he got out the truck. But, you know, imagine if that happened, we, we in a compact area, if that happened in the middle of town, and I always worry what's in those trucks. So, you know, we had a big derailment years ago, but it wasn't anything to do with an impact. The impacts are what, what, you know, I, I think about sometime and saying, every once in a while you seen, it's mostly the, uh, passenger train, you know, it goes a lot faster than the, uh, than the freight. And I'm looking at that thinking, you know, I, I just hope nobody's on one of those, one of those crossings. And we have people that are foolish, we have people that speed up and try to beat the train, and I just keep thinking, that will be nice, well, we don't have to worry about that.
And they go around the arms too, cause that's what happened in, in Lafayette with that, that, um.
Yes.
Eighteen wheeler, tried to go around.
But it will be good, it will be good when we have the arms and lights and I can feel like.
So people do do that anyway.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I can't protect stupid, I can protect my people that want to follow the law. Anyway.
I got a, I got a, a question, I can't wrap my, my mind around it, I don't pass that, that way too much. Caroline doesn't have a crossing right now, right? They do not have a crossing.
Only one of theirs.
But Deer does have a crossing.
Yes, Deer already has arms and lights.
But what happened back then, for some reason, back in the days of, uh, Mr. Merrill, um, Deer Street was offered. But for some reason, they chose Caroline, so they put the arms at Deer. But it always, it always was offered, you know, that they closed Deer Street. So this is not just a, something that just came up. Uh, so they did what they wanted to do back then, so I'm thinking that that's their era, anyway.
And that's, that's what I'm think, I'm thinking.
You know, um, because they could've changed things way back then, and they chose not to. So we still fighting this fight.
Well, that's why they're not gonna do it, they saying, well, we already paid money.
But we still have, uh, like the three million or whatever, that's, that's still in the hole, that you may never get anyway. But like I said, what's, what's the harm in going through the process? No, it's not gonna cost much for the, uh, for the process. We make our own signs, we have the building to have it, um, and that's all that I ask. We go through this, cause since they said, you know, you can go through this process. Let's go through the process before April, and what happens, happens after that. And we, then we have done all that we can do.
Yes, sir.
You know, I think what they doing, they're just telling us what they gonna do. The angle of Caroline is, is what their liability and where they gonna stick. I, I mean, that's what they gonna do. DOTD is gonna do what they gonna do. And they get, hang that to the end. I think that's why they end up putting those lights and that on Deer way back when, cause they knew that's what they gonna end up doing. You know? And, you know, where the money's coming from, the whole thing at the end of the day, is the other light, the arms and lights for the other crossings. And, you know, where the money's coming from, the whole thing at the end of the day is the other light, the arms and lights for the other crossings. I mean, if you don't call it a carrot, we don't call it whatever, it's what it is. It's something that we getting and we need, and it's opportunity that maybe they won't have that later. I don't know. We don't know. We here now. We just gotta do, need to do now and, and hope they go through what they say they're gonna do, you know?
Hope.
Hope, yep.
You know, you know, Generec didn't shit by, you know, they, they, they came and just closed the three and that other three, they did the same thing they doing here. We not the enemy. The state is laughing, smiling. We fighting all this, you and I, against the people. The state brought all this up. We love them to come just put the other arms and lights and leave. I thought they were plum nuts when they mentioned Caroline at first, years ago. I said, man, you better get it off that list. That ain't gonna happen, just like you talking about in here. But man, they, they honor his son of a guns over there. It's hard to beat that battle. They telling me today, you gotta deal with legal now, not no deal. Like hell I will. I will keep dealing with a DOTD man that's in charge of all this. You got some answering to do still. Yeah, I'm fighting for everybody.
Okay, final comment. And the fin, my final comment is, I'm asking my fellow council members, I'm asking my fellow council members to go along with my request as to go through the process. It's not gonna cost us an arm and a leg to do that. The constituents have asked us to do that. And that's all I'm asking, that we go through the little process again.
Other comments? Any other questions?
Call for the vote on this motion.
Uh, yeah, but there's two issues there, and I wanted to make a motion to do the second one.
Well, once we finish this one, if it doesn't succeed, then.
If, yeah, if, if.
Well, you could do a substitute for that one. You gave us two options, one or two?
Mm-hmm.
Well. I wanna make a motion for two.
Jeff's looking it up. I can tell. These guys book out.
It's not an amendment. Yeah, it's not an amendment because it's an amendment that defeats, and that's not a proper amendment. But let me just look at the substitute.
Jeff, you got?
I don't think you can, I don't think this is a proper amendment or a substitution because you're not, I mean, you, you're, it, the effect of this would be to deny the motion completely. So I think you would need a vote on this motion and see if it passes, and then if this is, if it doesn't pass, then there's a second motion, and you could bring it up then.
Goes back to the original motion. They have to make another motion to the second. If this one fails that I put on, then it goes back to the original motion.
Well, no, the original motion was to have a discussion.
Original motion was to have a choice.
Right.
So it goes back to have a choice.
It goes back to the floors open and you can have another motion. Um, but I don't think a prop, I don't think an amendment or substitute would be proper, because this would totally eliminate, deny the, the, the main motion. So, um, I think it's a yes or no on this, and then if it fails, then another motion would be in order to go the other way. And it takes four votes to do anything.
I got a question, just, just for my clarification. I'm ready to vote on this matter, but was it a matter of beating one to the punch on making the motion?
Not really.
Right.
See, cause it, it is a deal with the two options, um.
Maybe I should have put three?
That's why you gave everybody opportunity to talk.
Hindsight, maybe I should have put three, that the third one was do nothing, cause the letter said we could do nothing. I, I don't know. I, I didn't look at it that way.
Well, the deal is with the, you know, with the second one. Usually if you make another motion, then you, you actually vote on that one first, and if that one fails, then you vote on the next one.
If it's a motion to amend, yes, but I don't think this is a proper motion to amend because it totally wipes out the first motion. You're not amending it, you're saying no. So I think you need to vote on the first motion.
Exactly. You would be saying no if you voted for the, the second motion that I wanted to make.
Right, which is, which makes it not a proper amend. So.
It's not an amendment. No, it's a separate motion.
Then you gotta vote on the first.
So in the future, I probably should put three things.
Well, at the rate we're going.
No.
No, no, no.
There will be no decision at all.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, it's okay.
No, the idea is both of them should be on the floor, and we, we should actually vote for both of them.
It's almost the same thing.
Well.
No.
You can only have one at a time.
Can't vote at the same time.
Well, I'm not saying at the same time.
Oh, yeah, they do two different things.
But you gotta vote on the first one first.
If we vote on the first one, everything that we want gonna happen. It's, everything that we want to happen is gonna happen if we vote on this motion.
To close, proceed to close Caroline Street.
Yeah, because if you vote.
I mean.
If you vote yes for his motion, then that means that's how you're gonna vote for number one.
Right.
And then yours is the exact opposite, so.
Right.
So if you vote no.
Whichever motion we vote on, I think it'll be the same result. Right?
Well, I think.
Can we call for the vote?
Well.
If, if you call for the question.
They can.
Then it takes five votes to cut off debate.
Okay, okay.
Or y'all could just quit talking and the mayor could call for the question. It's either one.
Any more debate on this issue? Any more talk?
Okay, being clear, if you vote yes for it, it's closing Caroline without a question. If you vote no, that means we go on to number two.
If, if there's a motion and a second for number two.
If that succeeds, or there could be a substitute motion at that time, cause you'd only have one thing on the table. If I'm right. Cross that bridge when we get to it. So any more discussion? Then I'd ask you please vote your machines. Okay, it's a tie. Means I break the tie. Mine I like it. I'm voting yes. Done.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to item six eight.
Kevin's going to present budget actual report for November first, twenty twenty-three through November thirty of twenty twenty-three.
Yep.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Thank you for staying. We're presenting the first month of the twenty twenty-four budget to actual. One month is eight percent of the budget. If you're okay with, we'll do like we did in the past, and we go through it in summer. General set, general fund, budgeted revenue, twenty-nine point eight million. We're at two point one million, leaving us at seven point oh five percent of revenue. Expenses are thirty-four million. We're at one point seven million, leaving us at four point nine two million, I mean, four point nine two percent. The following, before I start, I'll let you know that there were no disbursements because I have not transferred funds out of the sales tax. Cause I legally, I'm not supposed to transfer unless they're needed. We had some reserves that were in there, and we also had some other revenue. I looked at it. I made transfers in, um, December. So when I present the next one, which should be at the next meeting, we'll have the transfers out. But as for the revenue, nineteen sixty sales tax, ten point five million. We're at eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, putting us at seven point nine three percent. Pepperplex Tax Incentive Fund, budgeted revenue eight hundred thousand. We're at sixty-eight point seven thousand, leaving us at eight point five nine percent. Police and Fire and Public Safety Fund, four point two million. We're at three hundred and thirty thousand, leaving us at seven point eight three percent of the budget. Highway fourteen, budgeted revenue, three hundred and fifty-five thousand. We're at twenty-six thousand, leaving us at seven point four four percent. Spanish Trail, thirty-one point two thousand. We're at two point three, leaving us at seven point three eight. Parks and Recreation Fund, budgeted revenue, two point one million, actually at seven point five, leaving us at point three five percent. And the reason for that was because I had not approved the, um, Ad Valorem Tax at that time. I have made that adjustment in December, so when we come back next, the next meeting, we'll have that. I will let you know that the revenue is where we need to be. I see no problems with our revenue. Budget expenses of one point nine million. We're at eighty-nine thousand, leaving us at four point seven five percent of expenses. Pepperplex Revenue of three point eight million. Well, we have not recorded any revenue at this time. Expenses of three point eight million. We're at seventeen thousand, leaving us at point four six percent. Public Works Fund, three point one million. We're at one thousand four hundred and thirty-four. Again, that's because I have not allocated the, um, Ad Valorem Tax at this point. Leaving us at point oh five percent of revenue. Expenses of three point six million. We're at two hundred and thirty-six thousand, leaving us at six point six four percent of our budget. Garbage Fund, five point two four five. We're at three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, leaving us at seven point seven seven percent. Expenses of four point three million. We're at three hundred and fifty thousand, leaving us at eight point one two percent. Section eight vouchers, budgeted revenue of one point six. We're at one hundred and fifty-five thousand, leaving us at nine point eight six percent of our revenue. Expenses of five point six million. We're at a hundred and fifty-three thousand, leaving us at nine point six six percent of our budgeted expense. Waste Water Fund, budgeted revenue of thirteen million seven ninety-four. We're at nine million eight, I mean, nine thousand eight hundred and ninety, leaving us at point oh seven percent. And that is because we have not started receiving, um, majority of our reimbursements for the expenses. Expenses of nineteen point nine million. We're at four hundred and sixty-seven percent, which we are at two point three five percent of our budget. This is the first one. Judging by the trains we have, I don't see a problem meeting the revenue or the expenses at this time.
Questions, comments? No questions?
Yes, sir. We didn't get the grand money for the retention pond. It's not the way to hold a fund yet, right?
Not yet. It's coming, but, uh, what we have to do is a hydrology study.
No, I just want to allocate the thirteen.
So the hydrology study is in the works. Once we pass that test, then we end up with that three point one million, and then that takes the two point nine million we had budgeted for the retention pond from drainage money. Puts it back in drainage money so that we can do more. It can only be spent for drainage, but then we can do more drainage projects. But no, that's not in there. Yeah, no, no. Anything else? Thank you, Kevin. Councilman's remarks. I'll start on Councilman Dahl's side tonight.
Well, I wanna, um, thank you, everybody who was supporting the parade. The Mardi Gras Parade was, was moved to a Sunday afternoon versus, uh, at night. It was during the day. It was a success. I mean, it was a good crowd. And I think we might even, they might even think about keeping it as day parade versus night, cause they had no trouble. Everything was great. Um, uh, it just went great. Talking to a couple of restaurants after, uh, something as simple as a parade enhances those restaurants so much.
Economic development.
You could barely get to any restaurant without waiting in line or getting down and waiting. We went to one and we waited forty-five minutes to get a table. And, you know, prior to the parade, you could have walked in. So it is a big thing. People argue about the traffic. I had people calling me, I can't go down Main Street. What's going on? This and that. They, at the end of the day, those tax dollars is what we can do to improve this city and do things for all citizens. So I wanna thank everybody for the patience they had. And, um, the citizens coming out to support this. And one thing that is good is the first Mardi Gras Parade in the area. So everybody's excited about coming. So I wanna thank the citizens for supporting that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Um, Neighborhood Watch will be February the fifteenth at six o'clock PM at the Slimer. And, um, I just want my constituents in, on Caroline Street to know that, uh, I, I fought a good fight. Um, I'm, was with you, uh, in keeping the crossing open. However, some of my fellow council members weren't, and the mayor. So, um, sorry about what is about to happen to Caroline Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Again, that, you know, what a great discussion over a really topic that was a very difficult topic, but I think it all boiled down to the safety of our community. I mean, we need railroad and arms crossing at all hour, crossing across the city to make it completely safe, and it, it was a no-brainer for me especially, that I, I wanna protect my constituents. And it may not happen today or tomorrow, but down the road, we're gonna have accidents, so I'd rather be proactive instead of reactive. And I, I think it's a proactive vote on this council to make sure we get safety in armed crossings and all that crossings.
Mr. Speaker, Councilman Bruce.
I think it's still a crime shame the state has put this city council at odds against the people. We didn't bring it to the table to close these crossings. The state did. So none of us up here are enemies. It's just took six times, seven times, you want nine times for them to say no again and no again? You know, we, we did our best to try to satisfy this. And, uh, I have more friends over there around Caroline and, and the Evangeline. I drove that bus for fifteen years. I drove their kids. But we sure got some of those with, with arms and lights right now that didn't have some before. So we have one left. This is where the battleground was. So I thank them that we finally got a finalization on this, so maybe they can come help us. On Evang, on Iberia Weeks, Julian, French Street, never had none, no arms and lights in their life ever over there. So now maybe, maybe this is over and they'll come get it done.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, man, uh, first of all, I wanna, I wanna congratulate two of my friends, man, the guys that I grew up with, Corey Raymond back at LSU. Go Tigers. Um, and my friend, uh, Kerry Joseph got promoted to a quarterback coach for the Chicago Bears. I, I'm, I'm not sure, but I think that's the highest coaching position he had. Uh, and he was a quarterback in the, uh, Canadian Football League. Uh, man, I'm so proud of those guys. I know them personally. They always try to give back to our community. Corey shouldn't have never went to Florida anyway. But we so glad he's back home. We so, help me. I don't wanna.
Kerry Joseph's son, Houston Cougars.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Promoted to quarterback.
Okay, quarterback coach at, with Houston Cougars from, uh, Southern Miss. Thank you.
That's right.
Uh, I know his dad, uh, you know, just so proud of the people in our community, man, uh, New Iberia cutting up, you know, in the words of my friend, uh, Shebra. Shebra said, New Iberia cutting up.
Yeah, she's on the Facebook.
You know, uh, I went to the Generec Mardi Gras Parade. I know we New Iberia, that's our sister city. They had a great turnout, uh, the people who put it together, man, I, I wanna thank them. I actually had a, a chance to, uh, actually participated in my first Mardi Gras Parade. I was working, uh, well, no, that was Sunday, when was the Mardi Gras? It was Sunday, yeah. I didn't get a chance to go to hours, uh, and so on, but, uh, I got a chance to participate in the Generec. They did a good job, man. The people put it on, uh. And like I say, Mardi Gras ain't over. Uh, my lodge, my Masonic Lodge, we have a Mardi Gras Ball, Monday night, the last Mardi Gras Ball of the season in this area. Uh, come out and support at the, the Masonic Hall on Ann Street. Uh, again, it's Black History Month. It's Black History Month, uh, you know, uh, there's a lot of Black History programs going on. I've heard, I know of thrill.
Again, it's Black History Month, Black History Month, you know, there's a lot of Black History programs going on, I've heard, I know of three or four of them. Kind of social media, newspaper, kinda, I don't have all the dates, but support as many as you can, you know, but Mardi Gras, you know, it's our time of the year, we festive, we love Mardi Gras here, so just asking that we be safe, be careful, you know, and enjoy it, you know? That's all I have, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much. Our next council meeting is February the twentieth, and with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Very much.